We'll just get going, let this little guy get home. I'd like to call a meeting to order so I can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You make us all look bad, you're so dressed up over there. Best looking guy in the audience here. We have no visitors wishing to speak. Do we have any reports of boards and committee?
None last week.
Perfect. And we can turn it right over to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. My mom does dress me too as well, but apparently not as well. But I am pleased to jump right in and introduce you to Mr. Ryan Rogers, our new Assistant Director of Special Education, along with Dr. Otto, and they're going to give us a student services update. Welcome.
Nothing like presenting on the first month I'm here, so thank you.
We wanted to make sure we got junk right in. But I was introducing him, but Tony took our thunder a little bit this time. So we want to just give you kind of an overview of how we set up the presentation. So we kept it in line with the strategic plan. But part of our presentation, because we're required to update on Medicaid and also the counseling plan, you'll see that at the end. I know it's super exciting, I've been looking forward to that piece in particular. But we're going to be talking about teaching and learning, Amherst's Pride and Student Life. Obviously, special education cuts across all of them, so it doesn't neatly fall into one specifically, but we did our best to kind of show you where we think some of it falls. So I'm going to start with data, and specifically because we just want to acknowledge that we anticipated that there might be an increase in special education referrals. We anticipated that there could be an increase in mental health and behavioral needs. And we're just very appreciative that the board was supportive of that, you know, premeditation, because that is kind of what we're seeing with the patterns. So we just put together, compiled some data across the last several years. Obviously, COVID makes it a little bit wonky, because it's hard to determine exactly what that data means. But even if you look at, we're not at the end of the year, and if you just look at the number of students referred, we've quite a bit, of students that have been referred. It hasn't necessarily impacted eligibility, at least this year, but we're still in what we would call an interview season. This is like the time when a lot of meetings happen, so a lot of meetings are still pending. But we just wanted to kind of show you that, number one, we're grateful that we had the support of the board when we increased to full-time integrated co-teaching, because we think it was a smart move, given that we were anticipating it, and it seems to have happened. But also, the increases with the Family Support Center, looking at our professional development, those are all things that we're going to highlight. And just, we wanted to start the data to kind of give you a picture as to why we think it's important. So the first one was CSE, so school age. This one is preschool, but you'll see similar patterns. So across 21, 22, and 22, 23, we're just seeing an increase. And again, 22, 23 isn't over. So you're looking at the number referred, and then the number that have been found eligible. So it doesn't necessarily mean that we have a lot more eligible, but we are just getting a lot of parents that are worried, a lot of teachers that are worried, because they feel like the students are behind. But disability testing is looking at what's typical of a student this age. It's not necessarily looking at how are they faring in terms of the curriculum. So this is just showing the updated data. Your slides might have old data from March. I actually made my secretaries update the data just so it was most current, because it does change pretty quickly. TCIS data is just reflecting kind of the mental health end of things. These are going to be students that have maybe some behavioral difficulties, where they're going to need someone to help with self-regulation, crisis co-regulation. So we thought that this might provide just a glimpse of the mental health end of things, and then we'll talk about how we're addressing that. So again, we appreciated the foresight, because I think adding the Family Support Center, giving us an avenue to get needed mental health referrals in the hands of parents and also our staff, has been critical. And again, we're seeing that same kind of increase in the number of students that are experiencing like significant behavioral difficulties. And not necessarily like a ton more students, you'll see a little bit of an increase, but just some students that are having kind of those repeated difficulties over time, which is indicating potentially need for mental health, need for behavioral support. So both special education and then the mental health world of things are critical, you know, at this time. And again, we anticipated that, given COVID. The other thing I put in here, and the main thing I guess I want to point out, is if you look at 23, 24, and you look at, it says numbered SC. I'll talk about what each of these are. But that's referring to the number of students that are currently in a self-contained program. So 23, 24 is reflecting kids that are going to be in kindergarten next year, and where they're currently placed this year. 13 jumps off the page to me. It should jump off the page to all of you, because, you know, historically, over time, we've had a handful of students that needed that level of support, and now we're seeing more and more students that may have needed like a small 6-1-1 classroom, where there's no more than six students, one teacher, one aide. Now, you know, even at our highest number, that's nearly double. So that's a big increase. The other ones that you're seeing, special, CIT, is special education itinerant teachers. So that would be like a classroom where a special education teacher comes and provides support. Those students typically may end up like in an integrated classroom once they reach school age. SKIZ is special class in an integrated setting, which is the most, I guess, consistent with our integrated, is the best analogy I can make. So you would see usually the CIT and the SKIZ would feed into our integrated programs, and usually the self-contained would feed into our self-contained programs. As you know, we have four self-contained programs across the district, and usually we might have had like, I don't know, maybe four, and they would be spread between those four programs. Now we have 13 that we're anticipating. So it is a pretty significant change, and not one that we necessarily anticipate. This is obviously going to change, because this is looking at current three-year-olds and what types of programming they have. But I'm not necessarily seeing that same jump, but it's early days, and like I said, we're getting a lot more referrals. And if you look, you'll find things with little ones that haven't had access to a lot of support. And then RISO just stands for Related Services Only. So kids that are just getting speech, just getting OT, just getting PT. And there hasn't been as much of like a drastic change in terms of the number of students that need those things. So what are we doing to support those things? And again, we appreciate the board's foresight, because you guys have been super supportive of the sustained professional development plan. So in addition to hiring all these people, we know that the way that we impact students and impact student results is by ensuring that they're high quality. And so we want to make sure that all of our staff are human resources. One of the ways that we've been able to do that, with the support obviously of Lynn, who's helped to craft that plan, is to come up with a sustained plan for both our special education teachers and then our mental health staff. And so I'll talk a little bit about our special education teachers, and some of this is a review. So last year, as you know, we did integrated co-teaching. We started by talking to admin. We wanted to make sure everyone's on the same page with what is integrated co-teaching, what does that look like. We then offered a summer institute with Stephanie Fabney from Bosie's, previously Baxter's, you may have heard her name as Baxter before. And then we did follow-up training for anyone that couldn't make that. And then we also did kind of a process, super fun. We were really excited to hear about all the special education regulations, but kind of like a procedural process overview for all the new staff.
The one thing, and I'll jump in for just a second, that Amherst, that I've been surprised, not surprised, but it's been different from the other districts that I've been in, is the amount of professional development that the team here, the administrative team, provides for their teachers has blown me away. Because oftentimes, I've seen programs that open, and then there's no training to support it, and the kids suffer, and the teachers suffer. But Amherst has been exceptional from what I've seen about providing that ongoing professional development. And I mean, that's kudos to, well, I'm new here, so I'm not.
Kudos to Lynn for, you know, advocating for that sustained professional development.
It blew me out.
But it's continued. So, you know, we all know that one and done is not the way to do any training, because people are not going to glean from it what we are hoping they will. So in addition to some of those kind of one-point-in-time PD opportunities, we also set in motion a plan for continued professional development, where they could actually bring students IEPs, work with their coach to talk about how are we specially designing this instruction so that we're really meeting the needs of students. And so Stephanie Fabney has been doing that the last two years. Last year, it was focusing on integrated co-teaching and the six models of integrated co-teaching. This year, it's still talking about integrated co-teaching, but we're also talking about what is special about special education. So what is that specially-designed instruction? What does it look like? How does it match the students' needs? And then with the addition of UPK, we also had her actually push into some of the preschool classrooms in our UPK to try to support with some of the classroom management, behavior management, issues that have come up, which, as you saw, we're seeing just an increase in some of the students and their ability to self-regulate. And some of that is because they haven't finished school. You know, this might be the first time they're around other three-year-olds. And as we can expect, some of them are still learning how to cope with someone taking their toy. So she was able to provide some of that coaching. And the picture you see is actually in this room, but that's one of the sessions that she has, and she's meeting with usually two teachers. Sometimes it's co-teachers, sometimes it's two self-contained teachers. And they really have an opportunity to dig down deep, talk about students, and what sorts of instruction might help them. We also have done book studies. So these were voluntary, and actually, me, who we're celebrating a little bit later, helped to facilitate one of these at Windermere. So some of the pictures you're seeing are actually from Windermere. They did specially-designed instruction book study. And so we organized, these are actually links too, so if you're really curious, you can click on any of these. It gives kind of an overview of some of the questions that may have been asked, what they were reading, the chapters that they read. But the first year it was co-teaching, and the second year was specially-designed instruction. And our assistant principals, and in some cases principals, facilitated those. We're going to continue with some ongoing professional development, because I mentioned the SPED 101, which is really process regulations. We know that no one's going to be able to pick up all of the process and regulations in a one-point-in-time. We do have a manual that they can reference. But we really value, like I said, the ongoing support. Our school psychologists have been partnered with our new teachers and new related service providers to kind of walk them through, what does a good IEP look like? What should goals look like? So that was an ongoing thing that we've done. And then we've also had a plan for this coming year. And again, these are hyperlinks too, so if you're curious, you can open them up. But we have a professional development plan for next year as well, including summer coaching that will be voluntary with Stephanie, where teachers will have an opportunity to look at students that they're going to have for next year to get prepared. We've had some feedback from, at this point, the high school, where they were looking for some kind of specific or nuanced training. So we're looking at November 7th as a possibility for that subgroup. And then we're going to have ongoing training again next year to support the continued development. So PD is as good as, like, what does it result in? And this is just one example of just a creative way that specially-designed instruction was used, and this is Smallwood. So they used St. Patrick's Day. They actually had them bowling, and this was a way of teaching them subtraction. So they're taking from 10, and they're using this to, you know, do their caddie bowling, to learn the subtraction process.
So there were cabbage leaves flying everywhere down the hallway. And I walked in, I'm like, ah! But then like after watching the lesson for a cute match, the engagement was high. It was super cute, the kids were picking it up.
And we want the kids to have these engaging, hands-on, focused lessons that really target their special education needs. So moving on to professional development, this one's more aligned with PPS. So we talked about how we're seeing more behavioral and mental health needs, so how are we addressing those needs? How are we making sure our staff are prepared to address those needs? So as you know, we sought out, and it's themed, the Mental Health Awareness Grant, which is like a half million dollars that will have over the next five years. Part of that has already started. So this year, we focused on mental health awareness. We had Dr. Pratt who came, and those are the pictures you're seeing below. He did a half-day training with all of our admin, talking about mental health awareness, went through various mental health diagnoses, what are the signs, what are the symptoms, what are some things you can do. And then the same thing happened with a three-day training, which was really more clinical in nature. So if I'm a therapist, what are some research-based approaches to addressing this? And it really focused on our mental health steering committee, which includes our collaborations with Horizon. We had people from Gateway, we had people from our Family Support Center. And they were learning about these approaches within the umbrella of family systems theory, and also cognitive behavioral therapy. There's going to be a training for families May 1, which will kind of give like a, I guess, a broader overview, like a balcony view of some of these things. And then we're also going to do some more sustained training, follow-up training in the fall for our PPS staff. So again, the ongoing theme. We've also continued with our therapeutic crisis intervention training, which was built into this grant as well. So we've trained all of our teachers in de-escalation, and that will be something that we continue to look at. I'm going to show you a quick video, so I'm sure you're safe here and me, I am. So we're going to just show you a video from the high school.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Arasam. We are the co-advisors of the YAC Club. A YAC stands for Youth Activation Committee, and it is a piece of Special Olympics. So if you have unified sports at your school, you also have to have a club component with that. So the YAC Club is that component for Amherst. Our club's goal is to increase whole-schooling community inclusivity. And we're very proud, we have a large and growing membership. Our kids are really the inclusion ambassadors. And they are the ones who initiate and involve all the other staff and students in the building in this club.
So the club, when we meet, we meet two or three times a month for just a club meeting. And that's where we get together with students and discuss what the upcoming activities are going to be. Usually we have a little, like, if it's a breakfast club, we'll have a little snack at the beginning. And a piece of it is to try to create friendships within the club itself. And then we use that for the students to together team up and figure out how we're going to present some of these activities to the building and to the meeting.
So just like Mary said, we do have meetings for our club in the morning and afternoon to accommodate all of our students, who are also involved in sports in the district and other activities at the meetings. It's a brainstorming opportunity for the kids to generate ideas. And then we turn those into the whole-school-based events. Some of the events we've had are the Choose to Include event, the Rock Your Socks. A big one for our club is the Polar Punge, which is really, we raised, our students raised a lot of money, which then went back to the Special Olympics, who supports our club. So it was really nice to give back and to have a really fun day.
Hi, I'm Emily.
Hi, I'm Matten. And I'm thrilled, since the day at my school, we had a crazy soft day to sell diversity.
I wear sailor socks, and my soccer socks are always purple and yellow.
Hi, I'm Nelson.
Hi, I'm Nicholas Barnes.
I'm Deb.
One of my favorite parts about YAC was doing the Polar Punge, which we all experienced.
We do the Polar Punge every year. Can I, what's your favorite part about Polar Punge?
I am, I am in a YAC club. I am with achievers and students.
What was the water like at the Polar Punge? Was it really cold, was it hot? What can you tell us about it?
I went, I went so far as cold.
It was very cold. I know one of my favorite parts is when we're in the time and we do the dance party. It's a great time for all of us to come together. And I know Nick likes to, he likes to show us his moves every year.
Many of our students were able to go up on stage and actually show their dance moves to the rest of the people.
And it's a great time for us to bring new members into our club, because I know that's how I joined. I like you.
I learned it with dance with girls.
Hi, I'm Autumn. And at the beginning of March, we had a Choose to Include campaign.
Hi, Mary, fantastic. And my thought can start to pass this out to people.
Though not all of our members are a part of the Unified Sports, many of us are. Raise your hand if you are in bowling. And raise your hand if you are in basketball. And raise your hand if you would love to have volleyball added as a fall Unified Sport. Unified is a great time for all of us to come together, and it gives us a chance to have friendly competition, and also connect with other YAC Clubs and Unified teams around our county. Go Unified Tigers!
So, well, for Unified Volleyball. And I thank you to Lori, who helped to film that. I just think it's helpful to see from the students, you know, what they've been doing. We included some of the photos from these things. If you haven't been to any of the events, they're literally amazing. Like, the Polar Punge is terrifying to me. It's early December, it's so cold. And these students and teachers are going into this freezing water. It is truly a dance party. The kids are breaking it down on the dance floor. And then the Unified Sports are just wonderful. And there's more, there's more that we could be exploring, and we hope to explore with that. So moving into Amherst's Pride, I just wanted to highlight, we've had some additional collaborations this year. So this year, we've added both Horizon and Best Self. So speaking again to the increase in behavioral and mental health needs, we've had a longstanding relationship with Gateway. We've just established a relationship with Horizon, and then Best Self is a new collaboration that we're working towards. And that's also part of our Mental Health Grant goal, is to increase those connections. And then lastly, Student Life. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, because I know Mike gives updates, but I just wanted to highlight all the events that the Family Support Center is putting on. This is just highlighting a few of them. Some of them are really, really well-attended, and they're based on our feedback. So they survey based on the feedback from schools, based on the feedback from families. They offer events, some are annual, and some are one-time, and we haven't had them yet. So these are just a few of the events. I include some photos from them, just so you could see. Pausal Love is actually one of probably the most well-attended events. We had, I think, 86 people that registered, 80 people that showed up for these events. Anyone, everyone loves puppies, I guess, and wants to be from the pups. The project with the art department is another huge draw for people. They average about 30-ish people per event, but it was across several different days, and they've had different things that they're working with, different media. And it's a big draw, because they get to see their teachers and, you know, learn from them outside of school. We also, just this year, had an international story night. So again, celebrating our inclusive and diverse society and diverse history. So this was an opportunity to kind of share a different culture and talk about a story. And then Tiger Bonds. So we've had Tiger Bonds, this was another event. And the purpose of Tiger Bonds is really inclusivity. So we're trying to have our students with disabilities matched with students without disabilities. This was one event we had where they watched the Polar Express. They also had an opportunity to decorate cookies and make some crafts. So really well-attended event as well. So that is our student services update. We are required to go through the student counseling plan. It's written into part of our requirements. And then the Medicaid update, and Ryan's, we go through those, but they're relatively quick.
So she took all the fun parts? So I'm going to go through it, I don't want to run too long. I'm going to go through it rather quick. But if you do have any questions or anything sticks out, just shout. So our comprehensive school counseling plan is linked right at the top. That gets specifically into what our counseling plan in the district looks like at the elementary school. We outlined six very specific goals and how we're going to go about that. And then we also have the middle school and the high school linked in. And that specifically touches and aligns with the American School, or American School Counselor Association standards. But if you look into these different board links here, it's going to be including some data that I'm going to give to in the next couple slides. So our advisory council meeting, so props to Julie Terry and Dave Benton for heading this out both last year and this year. But they get a wide range of community members, administrators, teachers, PPS staff, parents, and most importantly, students involved within a conversation around three highlighted topics. Last year, they covered mental health, academic challenges, and behavioral support specifically. These are some of the pictures that just involve, our stamping ground is a middle school after-school program that celebrates inclusion and diversity. Rory's Corner, pictured over here. Supports behavioral supports, it's kind of a cooldown area at Smallwood. And then these are some of the different events that we covered at the middle school that were really cool. This year, for the advisory council meeting, the members, again, the diverse committee of parents, students, administrators, teachers, etc., covered school attendance, community connections, and diversity. So those are three things that we're going to be focusing on this upcoming year. Collecting data to make sure that we're improving school attendance, celebrating the wonderful diversity of Amherst, and then making sure, Amherst is an unbelievable community, so making sure that we're doing all weekend as a district to leverage those resources and make sure we get the best student outcomes. This is my SAVR's data, and the acronym, just so I don't mess it up. It's my social, academic, and emotional behavior risk screener, is what it stands for. And what it is, is it's what we do as a screening tool to monitor mental health within all of our buildings. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you a couple different screens, and they're all separated into the different buildings. The good Cliff Notes is that what we've noticed from last year to this year with students who have risk associated with those different attributes of mental health risk, social-emotional learning risk, things of that nature, across the board, has either stayed the same or largely went down from last year to this year.
I'm sorry, you're not, I just want to add, these are assessments that students fill out themselves. So this isn't teacher-based, this is a student self-assessment. It only goes second through 12th grade.
What you will notice is if you look at Windermere, the numbers are slightly elevated when compared to Smallwood, which you might look at socioeconomic status, diversity, things like that. Aside from that, the data has largely went down. So the middle school, the high school. And then lastly, we get to Medicaid, which is the most interesting slide of the entire presentation. At the top, you look at our annual revenues that we've generated from Medicaid billing. You see that during COVID, it went down. This past year, we were just a shade under $800,000. The regulation, New York State has recently changed the regulation, and the threshold changed from $500,000 to $1 million. And what that does is as long as we stay under that $1 million, essentially, we don't need to meet certain requirements of the compliance program. Not really a big deal, we're still going to be in compliance, it's just our reporting on the backend. And then the last thing that I will mention is that the Medicaid Management Advisory Group, or MAG, is no longer offering, we used to sub out to them for Medicaid billing. And it was pennies on the dollar for the amount of money we received in return. But they ended up dropping us, or dropping many of the clients in the area as they may no longer be offering that service, to no credit of my own, but we've looked at other options. And where do we currently stand with that?
So Kenny is the one that we're looking to establish a relationship with, and they do largely the same thing. But it was obviously not for you to just hear like, hey, you know how you make up an $800,000? Like, we're not doing that anymore. So we were looking into alternate options. Bosie's has some options, but they don't do exactly what MAG does. So Kenny seems to be the most comparable.
Question? I was quick, I tried.
You said that the numbers in the mySavR's went down. You're talking like last year, this year?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Because is this just this year's numbers?
So this is this year's numbers. If you'd like next year's numbers, I could give you some specifics in my notes. Windermere has largely been a lateral move. Whereas looking at Smallwood, and I'm just making sure I'm giving you accurate data, looking at Smallwood and the high school, we've seen a small decrease in these numbers. And at the middle school, we've seen a significant decrease in students at risk, both some and high categories.
There's notes embedded, so I think Don may have shared the presentation, so there's actually notes embedded below. So if you're curious, and you have the data from last year too, but if you're curious, I put in the numbers, it's just as a reference point.
Jumping to kindergarten students for the CPSC services and coming kindergartners, are those new students, new families, or are they, do they tend to be?
There's a mix. So I would say we've had students even this year who entered UPK and never had services before, and are really, really needy students, like students that I would say probably would be identified with autism or something similar. And we've also had students that are just lower functioning than ours. And that's one of the things, and I mentioned this to 22, but that's one of the trends that we've seen this year. It's just really like low-functioning students. So it's not even students that like, oh wow, like people are really referring a lot. Like, these kids would absolutely be referred regardless, because they are, you know, presenting with like autism-like symptoms, where they're non-communicative, you know, they're not social. And it's hard, it's hard to know the ideology, because obviously, we also know kids were at home. They weren't socializing, weren't going out. They weren't socializing, weren't going out. And that's when kids learned to talk and socialize and play and share and all those things. So we're definitely seeing an increase in students that are presenting with just a lack of those skills.
I wondered if, you know, if you keep doing such a good job, if we don't. I mean, we're already a little bit of a magnet, you know, people, you know.
It's certainly true.
Get a house in Amherst because.
Yeah, I don't have hard data on it, but I can say we've absolutely heard from parents that have referred other people. Like, we have families that will move in and say, we've heard great things about Amherst, so we moved here. Great! And it is great, you know, it's great to have that reputation because I think we're pretty great too. But it's a daunting number, like to see that, it's like such a high number and we want to make sure that we're able to continue to have great programs, you know, and not water them down or not be able to serve kids the way we know is best.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, you've been so kind, your first presentation.
Next time, you're going to need to wear a bow tie though, please.
And the turn again?
So Dr. Shanahan is going to provide us with an update on the Every Student Succeeds Act accountability. So this is the federal accountability measures. And as you know, testing during 2020 and the 21, or 2021 school year was kind of put on hold, which caused New York State and the federal government, Department of Education, to have to reboot their accountability system. And of course, they made changes to it when they were rebooting it and they're rolling that out this year.
I'm going to give you an additional handout. And the reason is because when I start to talk about indicators, it's almost going to be like word salad unless you can look at the whole picture. So I'll show the whole picture in this slide, but at one point, I may reference this so that you can stay with me. Just because, it's that old show, follow the bouncing ball. I feel like when we get to the indicators, you're going to need, it will help you since it will be your first time seeing this. So as Mr. Penala said, this is a new accountability system. And the reason that it is a new accountability system is that in 1920, we closed in March and there were no state assessments given. So and then in 2021, some limited assessments were given. But for example, if our students were remote, they were not to take the exam. So several of our indicators for ESSA for accountability are based on longitudinal data. And all we have right now is 21, 22. So I'm going to refer back to this a couple of times and you'll see why some indicators might have changed. I'm going to show some exemplary data tables that are in blue later if you look at this. So you take a peek, the blue is just examples, exemplary data from the state. But I have data tables from Amherst in her as well, so I'll share those with you. So there's going to be five sections of this. Some of the accountability restart and the designations, I'm going to try to address quickly just because of time, but I'm happy to expand on any of them on how these calculations were done. It's tantalizing. But I can expand if necessary. Nerd girls like me love that data. So I'm going to start out with what the accountability restart was. And what that restart was, the state decided that, well, the US Department of Education said, we applied for a waiver and we were told no. New York State or those states will have a waiver, you will figure out how to measure accountability. And we wanted to, and the state came back and decided they wanted to use a system that was very reliable, transparent, and explainable to us, the ones that have to use it. And so they began starting discussions, they involved educators, stakeholders. They went back and forth with the waiver with the United States Department of Education. And then they drafted a plan, which was then approved. And I'm going to share with you what that plan is for 21, 22 data only. So the state education department told New York State and all other states, they have some flexibility with the previous regulations in that they can make a one-year plan. So what I'm going to share with you today is literally a one-year plan. So it might slightly change next year and I'll be back. So it's a one-year plan, or they can do long-term. New York State went one year. And then they could consider changing all the long-term measures because obviously you don't have long-term data. And that they could change the methodology they had previously used. However, what they could not do was they could not change that ninety-five percent participation in every subgroup. So even if you have a really small subgroup, our Hispanic population tends to be very small. We still have to have ninety-five percent population within that subgroup. So not the whole school itself, but within every subgroup, that's what we're striving for. And that cannot change, that had to remain. You have to use indicators to measure that the whole state uses, so there's no creativity involved. You had to stick with what everybody could use. And that's not when you're comparing, you're comparing apples with apples, right? It makes sense. And this state was required to identify the lowest five percent of Title I schools. And they could exclude students from high school participation performance calculations because that was skewed during that time period. So as I alluded to, New York State did approve an accountability system for one year. They suspended some indicators, they modified some indicators, they added a new core subject performance indicator, and they modified some scenario tables on how you get identified to be a school that might be in need of improvement. And then they modified exit criteria, which I'll take you through some of this right now. So this is the first thing I looked for when I got the report was what is our designated status? And interestingly, what the state decided to change was there are still four different status levels that you can be identified as. But if you notice, we have historically been in good standing. That is no longer a designated status level. Now it's called local support and improvement. So we are an LSI school and what that means is they took the word "good standing" away because they recognized that no matter if you're in good standing, you're always looking for continuous improvement. So they wanted to basically say you're always trying to look at your data, where your students are, and what kind of supports you need to put and resources you need to put into place. So you will no longer see GS, you will see LSI. I had a moment when I looked at them, like, what is this? So then I was like, phew, okay. So any other designation statuses have remained the same. This I left for your information. This basically will explain to you what each level, each status level gets as far as support from New York State, and I'll get to ours in a moment. And as I said, I was pleased to say we maintained our status. We do not need regulatory requirements and New York State will partner. They're going to soon release some resources and tools so we can work on continuous improvement plans. So I will tell you that the state did come to the region and I did go to a meeting on March 9. I had to wait to see if the room was full or not because we were in an LSI school. We didn't have to be there. But you need to know what's going on in order to address what the accountability measures are. So I did get to go and it was, they're really trying to change the narrative to be less punitive and be more, how can we work together to get student achievement up, to get chronic accenteeism down? So it was a very refreshing, positive perspective. So this partnering to provide resources and tools, they're soon to release whatever those might be. So that was their attempt to change the narrative across the state. But to get into accountability status, so we know our status is an LSI. How did we get there? Where are the indicators? So this is what I also gave you because you're going to want to keep this out when I break them down or it does become word salad for you because it's your first time seeing it. And I'll do a little movement here when I do this. So for elementary and middle school, there are these two composite performance achievement level scores right here. These are based on ELA, math, and science. If you go down to high school, you add in social studies, okay? So these, and I'll explain to you what these look like in a minute. The student growth or combined composite growth, anywhere it says pause, that is required longitudinal data in the metric in order to run the analysis. So they can't do that because we don't, we only have one year's worth of data. So anything that's paused is a longitudinal data point. So basically, those are bond, they weren't included in this. We have a single-year data of English language proficiency and also chronic accenteeism. I'm going to break this down now so you know what is weighted and what is core because it does make a difference on what we pay attention to. So a weighted average achievement score, the denominator is based on every student enrolled in that grade level, or, I'm sorry, in that school, or if it's greater ninety-five percent of the continuously enrolled students. So think about that. The numerator is going to be the level twos, threes, fours, weighted like it's always been in ELA, math, and science, in elementary and middle. Well, we're going to take everybody, even if they don't have a valid test score. So weighted, you'll notice when we get to our individual buildings, I want to point this out because you'll notice that we might have scored less in weighted than we did in core. But that is because this includes in the denominator every child enrolled. Which then the only way to raise that score is to increase your participation. Which goes back to what I shared with you on the previous slide, which is they want ninety-five percent participation in each subgroup. Okay, so I'm trying to link, there's a lot going on here. So these are there for you, I'm not, we don't want it to homocapulate right now, but they're there for your reference. So what basically happened is because they used our continuously enrolled students that didn't take the test and here as well, but this was, yeah. I'm going to stop there, I'm not going to go, I'm going to rabbit hole, you don't, I'm going to stop action here. So the core average, this is the one I'm a little, I paid a little bit more attention to because I already know if it's weighted, I have to increase participation. And I'll show you in a minute where we have to do that and we will work on that. However, with core, the denominator is on tested students. Anybody who has a valid test score is included in the denominator. So, you know, the diluting of the score doesn't, isn't as prominent there. And the high school, the weighted denominator, so they use the ELA, math, science, and social studies. Now, social studies in 2021, they were, no, yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two. Remember, we stopped the US history exam? So this is weighted less in the calculations and it is a combination of all the tests that were taken, our AP tests, our global. So, but the number is much smaller, so it was weighted much less in this. But the denominator here for weighted is going to be the four-year cohort and it gives you the dates on there, but it's everybody again. It's not just the people that have valid test scores. Whereas you'll see the, and I put this in here just because I like data. But the core then, you'll see the pattern is these, the denominator here is only going to be on those students that were tested. So if you look at the two columns that I gave you where it says weighted and core, I think the thing to vet out of your, that I put to the side, weighted, I just want to increase the number of students taking that assessment if possible so we get more data and you'll see where that needs to be done. Core, I'm really looking at the academic as well as, because it is the exact number of kids being tested. So when I looked at their indices, I was focused on, was it more ELA, math, science? And I'll get into that when I get into our building data. Chronic accenteeism, as always, is in there. That has not changed at all, it's ten percent. Students that are absent ten percent or more of the annual instructional days, which ends up to be eighteen days. What complicates this metric is we had COVID protocol where we asked kids to stay out multiple days. So we, it would expect that that could be heightened, we encouraged them not to come in and we had protocol in place in 21, 22 in our guidance, just to keep everybody healthy and safe. So I think those numbers are, might be a little bit higher than we would have expected. I will tell you, currently though, what we've been doing with the building admin is they rank ordered their accenteeism on a frequent basis. And there, you'll see in a minute, there's plans they're doing with kids and they're monitoring this on a regular basis. So I know that we're working on it actively. Suspensions are not counted because students are receiving instruction. So what they did with all of these metrics is they calculated everybody scored and then scoring, and they rank ordered them. And so they just rank ordered every school for every metric for each one of these calculations and then they put us in buckets. Ten percent of less, schools that were scoring ten percent, and that bottom ten percent, they were scored a one. And then between ten point one and fifty was a two, fifty point one to seventy-five was a three, and et cetera. So they just created a large rank order list, not just for chronic accenteeism. They did it for weighted, they did it for core, and they also did it for chronic accenteeism. So this table, these metrics were used to assign your scores of one, two, three, four, but based off of rank order lists, which is different. English language proficiency, we presented multiple times around the five proficiency levels that kids are in. That remained the same, we used the NICE slot to get that information. They used one year worth of data, which is a little bit harder to show the growth. What they did was they created a benchmark of what they thought students should be able to achieve in that time. And then through the NICE slot, they got the progress rate and they divided those to get a success ratio. So what was the actual student's progress? What did we anticipate they should have done? What did the state say the benchmark was? Do that math and then here's where they fall. Point five or less is a one, point five to one is a two, one to one, point two five is a three, et cetera. So graduation rates for high school only, they did the four-year combination, which they've done before. And they also, they calculated it unweighted for years four, five, and six. And they ranked those two. So they ranked them and then they put them where we fell across the state with these indexes. So that's like decontextualized data moving across what they used to get to that final LSI designation. So where do we stand? So I want to contextualize what I'm going to share with you because I want everybody to remember that we were remote in 2021. And I also want you to know that Windermere had two hundred and fifty-eight kids remote. And out of those two hundred and fifty-eight, there was a higher proportion of our students that were also black and, yes, and some of our, yeah, it was black at that point, that was the major, oh, and L, sorry. That's where I lost my train of thought. So black and L were our highest proportion of students that were in those, in that context. So I just want to make sure that we're clear because we did assume that learning remote may not, you know, may cause some difficulties for our students in general. But it was the best we could do to keep people safe. So the good news is if you look, I'm going to break this table down, that's why you have multiple tables because this is a lot. So I'm very pleased to say we have, we're scoring well in threes and fours, given what happened. So I think, you know, our teaching and learning model handled things the best that we could in a difficult situation and we were getting student progress. But let's look at what does that mean? So if I look at the weighted average, remember, this is everybody. So I'm not worried about this unless there's a lot of difference between, oops. Sorry, I know you said touchscreen.
Just touch the screen.
Woo! I have that fancy stuff in my office. So anyway, so the weighted average is everybody. So if you do look, we do score a two here with our black students as well as our students with disabilities. I'm going to take you down. What I'm really worried about is the core subject because these are the kids that sat for the test. So I will tell you, when I go back and I look at each number, the indices for each test, our black students scored highest in science, then ELA, lowest in math. And it's significantly lower in math. So what this tells us is if we're in a continuous improvement model is that we need to do some work in ELA and math in order to get these scores up. And I do have, the number is, hold on, get my specs on here. Or, I just need to get the number. Fifteen, I think it was fifty, it ended up being fifty-seven students. We had a lot of students opt out of our African-American students. So it was a low pool to begin with, which also keeps your number where it is right now, where it is lower. So we know we have work to do in math and ELA, science is always, that's vocabulary. It will help math, it will help ELA definitely. Same thing with students with disabilities, same trend. The difference though is when you look at the different indices, the math and ELA were very close in the forty, not percentage range, but forty index versus there was a bigger difference here, the ELA was more in this, was in a higher range than the math. So there's a bigger gap between ELA and math for our black students. Here, it's closer, so we know what we need to, we know where we need to focus. And then chronically absent, our black students as well, with that population was the most. That two represents fifty-seven students out of a hundred and fifty-seven African-American students at that particular school. That's the number, if you want to know the exact number and what does that mean, that's what it represents. So that's Windermere. So English language proficiency then too, any place there's a dash, we had to have a subgroup of thirty or more students in that category to get a score. So the reason to score is because we're under thirty students. And if you look, our economically disadvantaged Ls and L learners as well as, sometimes, they're combining all students because that's that whole population is scoring a two. That calculation is slightly different. What they did, I showed you the success ratio before, but we scored a point eight five, which put us at a two. That is rare for our school. We typically, our progress rates are easily three to fours at Windermere with our English language learners. So this, my inference on there is there is an impact when, you know, your education is coming through a screen versus coming, you know, face to face. Because we do typically make the benchmarks with our L students. So there's work to be done there. So there's work to be done there, and we will do it. And I'll tell you how. So how are we addressing this, right? Because we need to be proactive about what we're doing. So Mrs. Flanagan and Mrs. Steger, they will, they communicate with parents, they have a three-tiered letter system in which they make sure the parents are aware of what's going on. They, in communication too, if it continues, they bring a social worker to see if there's support that needs to be done, and communicate through that. And then three, there's, you know, obviously they're really trying to encourage to get that child in. But they also know there's a lot going on with social emotional health of some of the families in the building too, so that's where the social worker is helpful. And there used to be a little bit more support with CPS, which is not there anymore across the entire state. Because they're just finding it to be such a pervasive problem, it's one they're not stepping in with. So they're managing that through communication. But they also manage it through success mentors, a program that they've run for a few years, where they actually have an adult matched up with the students in the building who are chronically absent, even if they're not meeting that 18 threshold, they don't wait for that. They watch them every five weeks, and they see what's going on, and then they monitor them every week, but they make changes. So they will assign a mentor, which is their special area teachers, to a student to connect with them to check in, check out, those types of things. So there's programmatic support. And when we looked at that program pre-COVID, it actually reduced students' absenteeism. So I'm hoping that we see that data again. They also have UB medical students in the after-school mentoring program, which is like a big brother, big sisters. That is there to make those connections at school. We added it to the budget, and if the budget passes, the additional psychologist. So the psychologist should be able to take off some of the work of their counselors to address social emotional needs that are occurring. So that is all tied in together. Windermere also, as you know, does a response to classroom framework, which is helping the social emotional, getting kids into school, getting kids connected to school. Kids have to feel like they belong, so that work is being done. If you didn't go to the multicultural fair, oh my gosh, make the hair stand up on your arms, it is amazing, it's amazing families in the school. So the more we can get families in the school, the more we can get connected, the more people feel like they belong, the more success we're gonna have with those students and families. So that isn't one of many events that they do, that they're addressing with home visits, obviously, and they refer to family support center for figuring needs that need to be done. So with those composite scores in ELA and math, to make sure that we continue to grow and address our sub-populations as well, we did this year, we ran 3 through 5 math club after school, reading club. Because we knew, we talked to you last year about, we know after 2021, there are going to be gaps. So this stuff has now been in place for a second year, but you're seeing that first year data. So hopefully we'll see more growth this year. And K through 5 after-school English language program, which we expanded, it used to be just 3 through 5, and now we're doing all those grade levels, which is helpful. And knowing that this is not a one-year program, or issue to get out of, we increased this year a reading and a math interventionist to address those exact things that I mentioned to you as problematic. Summer school again, the hegemony and thing of awareness will increase the reading once that takes hold. We did a multilingual ecology, which is looking at how the student, how the environment in the school is representing our diverse population, and how to make that a very comfortable place for them to be. The L teachers bought these pen pals. So research says that if you're proficient in your home language, you have a better chance of then also being proficient in English. So these pen pals, what they do is they'll read a book, and they'll read it in either language. So they'll translate right there. So kids can hear their own language as well as English, which is goes by what we know about research and teaching, you know, multilingual students to be able to read. So those are some of many things, I wanted you to see that they're addressing. And what they need, and we're on it. So that's, that's to share our actions. This is small one. Small one is all threes and fours at this point. And so they're always, we did look with Rich and we talked about, or Mr. Crozier, we talked about where are your threes, what can you do about those threes? Once again, small populations, but we have to count every subgroup working for this. And so I'll share with you some of the things that he has done. The building administration team and PPS, they need weekly, similar to most of our buildings. They are implementing morning meetings for social emotional, they're just in their second year of that. So that's something they found has been helpful. They're also adding that school psychologist to take care of the social emotional, increase that attendance in school. Admission statement that they have gathered and bonded around is to provide students with most memorable elementary school experiences possible. So trying to get the kids to belong and want to be in these spaces, and families as well. Both elementary schools have done extensive work on culture responsive sustaining education framework for the past two years. We've had summer school for both. And he also, Mr. Crozier also had a Zari's Book Club, and Zari was a family member that was involved in that top shooting. So they had the family come in and talk about that, and they did some book, book club reading as well. Middle school? There's a couple places, and I'm gonna go straight to where those are. Once again, notice the 1 here and the 2 here. So a little less worried about that, because the 1 is everybody in middle school. And just that testing, there's lots of what, the kids come in, I'm like, written on a gum wrapper, like I want, I'm not taking my test today, I get to opt out and not take it. So what happens here is, some of the kids just don't take the test, and then that dilutes the score. So I'm more worried and concerned about the core subject score. So once again, our black students, it's math and ELA we need to be focused on again, and we know that. And we're on that with interventions, as well as chronic absenteeism, our black and Hispanic families are the areas of focus. English language proficiency, they were scored a 3, they scored a 1 on that scale when they did the progress versus benchmark. That's good. And they do a similar thing, the five-week meetings, follow-up parent communications and calls, and getting a PPS involved if kids are out more than four consecutive days and it's not due to an illness. Student adult mentoring program, so they have same thing, similar to what I have reported for Windermere, they have an adult to connect with. They have situations with mental health, partnering with family and outside counseling, Horizon Gateway they do as Dr. Otto was talking about. And they're gradually trying to reintegrate some kids with high anxiety. When I, when you speak with both middle school and high school, the anxiety is something that they're working on, and how do we get kids to get back into school when they're feeling very anxious about those situations? Home visits as well. Enrichment for math, they're, even for students that might be on the cusp, like they don't qualify for intervention services, but they could use a little push, because there might be a gap in their learning for what had been covered. We did, we have that in, in place for those students, which has been successful. Summer school, we've been trying to get our English language learners into some coding camps for their using their math and their language together. So that is another innovative program to get them going. High school, once again, threes and fours doing well. But if we look at their, 2 is with the Hispanic population. Once again, small subgroup, but we have to be aware of that. And they are aware of that, they're working very hard to make sure that students are in school. Tracking student attendance, there's some actions they're taking, teacher communication with families again, formalizing tiered interventions with their IST team. So what are the steps they're taking in tier 1, tier 2, tier 3, based on student absenteeism? And they're also doing their home visits, and they're implementing, individualized, sorry, plans for students have been disengaged due to mental health. It's been a challenge at the high school to make sure kids feel connected and to get them back into those spaces, and they've been working very hard on that. And they're also, if, they don't want anybody to get too far behind. So if a student's getting too far behind, they are actively leveraging some of the alternative placements so that kids don't feel so far behind that they can't get caught up. So if you wait too long, then it gets difficult, and then they get worried about not being able to complete a course or graduate, so they have been working on that as well. Summer school, which is not credit recovery, which is what it was before, it's a full-blown summer school. And the students have enjoyed actually being in without computers and with books and writing and paper. They expressed a lot of satisfaction with that. They've also been working with their faculty on building positive relationships in a culturally responsive perspective as they're doing it as well. So those are the, those are where the schools are at. Last thing I'll show you, or last two things is, there are scenarios for how you got where you were. So really, the way to be identified as the bottom 5% is you had to have a 1 in your weighted and your core, in both. And then any of the other scores could have been anything else. Didn't matter if you had cores on the others. If you had a 1 in your weighted and your core, you were identified. And then they took the bottom 5%, and those will be, the schools getting the most amount of support from the state at this point. And that's how they will back up, those are their status designations that I presented in the beginning. I think this is really a one-year thing, but we'll see what happens. It used to be a little bit more complex than this. And then they're really pushing this continuous improvement model. So envision where you want to go, analyze what your data says, listen to your stakeholders, implement, and then continuously work through a process of evaluation and change. And we don't use this exact same model, but we do have a continuous model of improvement. So this is what the state is running when they are working with school districts moving forward. That was a lot. So I can go back to any slide you want. I just do want to say that our students did well. I think they did well with threes and fours, but I want you to know, we also know that we need to improve. And that's why budgetarily, we came to you for interventionist positions, those positions we knew we would need. Because coming out of this is not a one-year endeavor, it's taking a couple years. But we do seek good growth, and you know, hope it continues if we keep addressing students' areas of need. Whether it be academic or social emotional.
You made a comment early on, when we were talking about the elementary schools, and they're not using CPS anymore?
No, they're not. When, if a student was chronically absent, what would happen was, and you couldn't get a response from a family, like you've done your letters, you've gone out and did your visit. They used to get involved in that as educational neglect. They stopped that, I don't, I don't want to quote the year, but it was several years ago, and we were in the midst of COVID, because the calls were, there were so many calls, they couldn't keep up. So for attendance only, they're not supporting that. And I'm looking at Amy, because I know that we've talked about this, is that I'm referencing that correctly?
I've actually spoken to CPS, so, and we have a CPS liaison that's available to consult with. I actually spoke to a supervisor, so unless it like reaches a threshold where there's concerns beyond attendance, where it rises to like a threshold of real concern about educational neglect, they typically are just not taking the call. So it's not that we aren't calling, it's that they won't take them. Just because there's other cases that would take priority, like if there was physical abuse as an example.
Yeah, so what's the, I don't know, like...
I'll use an example, like when I went to the multicultural fair, and I know Lori, you were there too, I saw that others maybe too, but Mr. Pigeon was there. Mr. Pigeon was there because he did a home visit for a student he was afraid he was losing. Because he couldn't get the student to come back into school. So the way to get him out of the house and to go for a walk was to do the visit. The parents were comfortable with this, got him to walk around the block, he saw the multicultural fair, he was a student at that building, he was very excited. Mr. Pigeon walked in with him, and the next thing you know, Mr. Pigeon was at the multicultural fair for a long time. But the student then ended up calling his younger siblings to come, and they met, and they interacted within that community. So I think our administrators, and I, you know, Amy is here too, they could speak a little bit more about this, but they're making efforts like this to connect to parents, to connect to students. And in this situation, the parents wanted the assistance. We can't get them to go, right? It's a high school student, he's not coming. So I think when I wrote home visit, home visit, home, I think that's really important. Like they're, they're reaching out, they're trying to connect in that way to families, to students, to get them to come. And I don't, I do know we've talked about, we probably need to be innovative and creative as we go forward, to continue to think about how to get people that are, have been, maybe just, they're just not as engaged as they used to be, how to get them back then. And we've talked about that in some previous meetings, and are still planning around it. So, does that answer?
Yeah.
And that's going on regionally. When I go to my regional meetings, people were just, initially when it happened, they were like, they're just not taking our calls.
Yeah, I guess I can see the problem, but it's unfortunate, I mean, because...
But I do think if we build in... Yeah, well, we're... But if we build in like the family support center, the social emotional support, if we start, you know, or not start, if we continue to engage our families, I think that's the way to get through it. While the other thing is, we can't control what they're doing, but we can control these family nights. We can get moms and dads being comfortable. So I think if we address those issues, it's the beginning of belonging. As, as a parent in the school, when I walk in the school, do I feel like I belong there? Do I feel like it's a place unwelcome? The same thing with our students, so, you know, that, we're, we're trying at every, like, every cylinder we have going, we're trying to figure out how to address that. Even if it's, even if it's a small sub-population of like 30 students, how do we get those 30 in? And that's what we're working on, that's what the building administrators are working on with us.
Mrs. Steger, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we have had luck. If the student has an IEP, and we have called CPS on chronic absenteeism, they have picked some of those up, because the child isn't getting their medical, like related services of OT and PT. So we have had success with that, and then exactly what Dr. Shanahan said, partnering with the social worker, the family support center to get the family in and support them through those means.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
I think that brings us on to new business.
I need a motion for new business items.
I'll make a motion for new business items, E1, A3, N2, A, B, D, and E, 3, C, D, E, and G.
Any discussion? Mrs. Steger, before we go and approve this, you know, I mean, I think your son deserves some ice cream maybe, I'm going home for sitting here so great. Is that a yes?
It's a yes.
Okay, now.
Thank you, I won't do it's away.
All those in favor of approving new business items, 1, A through N, 2, A through E, and 3, C, D, E, and G, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries 6-0. Congratulations to all our 10-year recipients tonight, especially Mrs. Steger. Thank you for coming, and your son, and all this is, he looks fantastic there. We do, we do, that's her husband, yes. He's just the other guy. Thank you, we do value, and congratulations to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's obviously been an honor and a privilege the last four years to be at Windermere. I just feel so lucky and grateful to be part of Amherst. Such a, I don't know, incredible district with brilliant leadership that I get to work with and work under, and I just, it's such a successful school district. I really pinch myself every day that I'm lucky enough to be a part of it, and if you know me...